Morning, everybody. Going to call a meeting to order. It's nine o'clock. Lyon County Board of County Commissioners for Thursday, February second, two thousand and twenty-three. Today, our actions will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined or considered consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restriction must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The Board of County Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Line Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. And we'll have roll call. We have Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Keller, and myself in chambers. We'll go ahead and have invocation given by Matt Christensen of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful to come be for the start of this meeting for this county. We're grateful for the moisture which thou has blessed us with in this area to fill our reservoirs and to help the agriculture and residents that live here. We're grateful for the relative peace and safety that we enjoy and for the county officers and especially the first responders that help so many citizens in this area. Please bless them that they will be protected and can fulfill their duties in a safe and effective manner. Father, at this meeting, we would ask the to bless us all to keep in mind the best interest of the people that live here in this county and to help all to be civil in their discourses and to reason together to decide what would be best for all those concerned. Bless those in positions of authority to exercise that authority to bless the lives of those whom they serve to the best of their abilities and judgment. We ask for these things, Father, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Commissioner Jacobson, would you be pleased?
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation founded on its own, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item and before the board takes any action. Do we have any public participation this morning?
There's a couple on Zoom.
A couple on Zoom. Okay, it looks like Amanda Bernand.
Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. Good morning. On the west side of Stagecoach, floodwater flows south off the Virginia Range, then under Highway fifty in Culverts, and then northeast along Highway fifty in a drainage ditch. Black Hawk Road intersects Highway fifty, but there is no culvert under Black Hawk Road, so the floodwaters are diverted south down Black Hawk. At Silver Lane, the county built a dip, a drainage dip, west to east across Black Hawk to divert floodwaters east down Silver Lane. When they built this, they didn't ensure there was an outlet for the water at the east end of Silver Lane, which had a fairly high dirt berm at the time. In a previous high-water event, a thunderstorm in the middle of summer, a flash flood event occurred. Floodwaters about a foot high flowed east down Silver, hit the dirt berm on the west end of Silver, and rebound it west back up the street and into our properties. It was just pure luck that a resident had a track D seven dozer sitting there. They were home and were able to quickly remove the dirt berm, which allowed the water to flow out towards misfit flats in the river. Since that flood event, residents have been using tractors to ensure the outflows kept open. In the current flood event, Silver Lane was once again a drainage ditch river. I live on Silver Lane. That is my only access to my house, and I wasn't able to leave my home in my car for about a week because of the river in the road. The county should not be using a public road as a drainage ditch, and then not even ensure the floodwaters they divert have an outflow. Silver Lane is a non-maintained road. However, damage to this road has occurred from this diverted water and is continual. Gravel improvements, gravel or improvements that the residents have done to improve the road have been washed away in every flood event. A developer now wants to pave Black Hawk for access to their development. This drainage situation and the drainage dip on Black Hawk needs to be remedied prior to any improvements on Black Hawk, so the situation isn't just paved over. Silver Lane needs to be addressed as well. With drainage installed, so our road is in a ditch, long-term damage from these diverted waters flowing over the entire road has also occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. I have Rita Heidcamp from seven seven five Offroad.
Yes, good morning. My name is Rita Heidcamp, H E I D K A M P. And I'm the treasurer and a trained responder for seven seven five Offroad and Recovery. I'm also a Smith Valley resident. Seven seven five Offroad and Recovery is a Nevada five oh one C three that is run entirely by volunteers and has been instrumental in promoting safe and responsible off-road practices through education and community outreach. We also provide recovery services to those who find themselves stuck or stranded while off-roading or while following dangerous routes provided by mapping applications such as Google and Apple. In the past week, seven seven five Offroad and Recovery has recovered three vehicles from National Forest Road four sixty-three, including a twenty-five-foot box van attempting to deliver Amazon packages, a Cadillac SUV, and a Subaru. The owners of the box van and the Cadillac had to be rescued by the Douglas County SAR after spending several nights in the below-zero temperatures. Seven seven five Offroad required a team of eight vehicles over two long days to recover the box van due to its size and the precarious angle at which it was listing. We had team members coming away, coming from as far away as Reno to assist. Most recent recovery was a woman who was within within months of becoming a doctor on her way from Smith to Yarrington to perform a medical rotation. She followed Google directions and attempted to reach Yarrington over NF four sixty-three. She spent most of the day in below-freezing temps, stuck in the mud with no cell service. Her husband became alarmed when she did not check in as having arrived safely in Yarrington. We are told that a Lyon County deputy attempted to reach this woman with no success and nearly got himself stuck. Seven seven five Offroad successfully recovered the Subaru and got the woman safely back to pavement. We have heard of countless others who have been stuck and either self-recovered or who had friends or good Samaritans help them become unstuck. As things begin to warm up and thaw, conditions will continue to deteriorate and get much worse. A good Samaritan from Smith Valley posted a sign warning of the dangers of following your GPS over NF four sixty-three and included more appropriate directions as provided by the Lyon County Sheriff. As the sign was attached to the N dot barricade preventing folks from entering Wilson Canyon, N dot remove the sign. I've submitted a request to Google to remove NF four sixty-three as a viable alternative around Wilson Canyon, but until it is changed, I would like to request that the Lyon County Commissioners place a sign at the entrance to NF four sixty-three, similar to the one as seen by one of our volunteers in Wyoming that reads in big capital letters on a bright orange sign, "Your GPS is wrong. This road is closed. Turn back now" by authority of the United County Commissioners. I hope that you have the picture of the Good Samaritan sign and the sign that was seen in Wyoming. I I sent it this morning. Maybe it's included in your packet. I hope it is. I thank you for your consideration in this matter, and I request that my exact statement and the exhibits is emailed to the clerk this morning are included in the meeting minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll proceed on for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. I do know that we have to pull item six A. Have a motion to pull six A.
Mister Chair, I'm I'm moved that we approved the agenda with the elimination of item six A.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? AI, I think we have four vote to remove six A since we were not notified by the governor of a selection. And you have to understand that we did need to put that on there just in case we had a notification so that we could present it on the agenda. And unfortunately, we do have to pull it. Item seven, presentation of awards and a recognition for accomplishments. Don't have any today. And we'll move on to eight. Commissioner comment and county manager reports. Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Just a few items to report on. I attended the Nevada Association of Counties meeting on last Friday. They installed their their new officers for the year who are I don't remember. But Commissioner Higbee from Lincoln County, I believe, is the president. Supervisor Giomi from Carson City is the vice or president-elect for this year. And Commissioner, I can't remember her name, from Mineral County is president-elect. And then, of course, some of the things that we were talking about were the upcoming legislative session. One thing I do want to note is that Governor Lombardo has appointed a county liaison officer on his staff, which is a good thing to have because that's the single point of contact for us to go to. The gentleman's name is Tim Robb. And he will be there and and also attended the our Legislative Coalition Meeting on Friday, along with our chair and a county manager was there and Mister Foley. Then also the NACO Legislative Committee Conference called that day. And I attended the Dayton Regional Advisory Board via Zoom last night. It was a a very good meeting. They got a presentation from Mister Delair from Douglas County about their growth management ordinance and how that actually works or doesn't work. And looking forward to attending the National Association of Counties Conference next week. And with that, that's all I have, Mister Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson, comment.
Thanks, Chairman Hawkeye. I attended the Fernley City Council Meeting last night. Interesting conversation came up around a noise ordinance they're looking and doing and one, I couldn't help but note that one of the council members stated that our job isn't to make the cops' job easier. Well, I I totally disagree with that. I think by working with law enforcement, we are making their job easier and we're supporting each other, so I would hope that this count, this commission never takes that stance. We do need to support our police. We need to support a fire. We need to support citizens of Lyon County, so just wanted to throw that out there during this time and just kind of it helped remind me that I ran to be a county commissioner to serve the people and to to work with our different agencies to the best of our ability. And just kind of recommitted myself to that last night after I heard that nonsense. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, I'm not on a committee yet, so all I can do is report of where I've been and what I've been trying to accomplish. I've attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board, their new board. Most of it's new, so it's a little challenging for them, but I think they're going to be great. And so looking forward to that. I attended the school board just to find out some of their issues, some of the things that I by no means does this board have anything to do with the school board, but their budgets like three times as much as ours, but at the same time, their buses go down our roads, so, you know, we got to figure out where the intersections, you know, happen. I attended the N N D A for their State of the Counties address, and Andrew did a great job, and I I like talking to everybody there, getting to meet the other county members and see what problems they have or what they have gone good for them. Also attended the State of the State address with the governor. Met with Mister Kekefer and talked to him about the different challenges we'll have. Also, we do have good representation with Mister Settlemeyer. He's he's going to be running a bunch of the stuff up there, along with J.J. Kokachia. Bob Lucy's going to be doing some of the broadband stuff that's coming out here. He already is. I don't have the guy's name, but he's appointed someone for the rural county, so a lot of good things are going to be happening. Well, we'll just wait till to see what happens in legislative session.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. I did also attend the Western Nevada Legislative Coalition Luncheon in Carson City, and it's quite interesting to go through some of the legislation that's presented now or going to be presented to the legislature. After the last commissioner meeting, I was asked to address the Smith Valley Rotary and answer questions about things like Wilson Canyon and how the county is going to be coping with that problem for the next at least few weeks or more. So they had quite a few questions about things that are going on in the county, and that's why they wanted me to come and give them a presentation and answer their questions. We will move on now with the, oh, yes, Commissioner Keller.
I just wanted to add something. Commissioner Henderson was acknowledging the Board of NACO. And Cassie Hall is is the new vice president. I just wanted her name.
Thank you.
It disappeared from my brain.
That happens. Okay, we have Mister Haskin.
Good morning. For the record, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. I'll keep my comments pretty brief as I usually try to do. Gearing up for the NACO Legislative Conference will be flying out next Friday for that. Working while we're there, I'm working to set up meetings with our our delegation, our congressional delegation out there so that we can, we can try to discuss some issues there. I spoke at the N N D A breakfast. It's good to see Commissioner Keller there. Talking about the State of the Counties, so it was really well attended and it was really good, really good event. Last night, I attended both Dayton and Stagecoach Citizens Advisory Board, so that was kind of tough. I had to run back and forth because they happened at the exact same time, but there was items on both agendas that I needed to be there for, so kind of made it a little bit late to the Stagecoach one, but that's okay. And so that and then we're gearing up for the legislative session starts next week, so has already been talked about. We had the Coalition Meeting last Friday, and that was, that was good. We'll get some, some information there. And then I just wanted to touch on the the roads thing. I mean, we, we with regards to Mason Pass and some of the other dirt roads over over the hills here. So we have been putting up signs as as we've identified routes that GPS has been taking people. It seems like every time we put up a sign, a new route pops up. I'll have Dustin look into to this one. And we can, we can get some signs up, but I I just want to stress that we are recommending that people go through Carson City and around. I know that's a long way around, but we're not recommending people take the, take the dirt roads. We have been doing our best to keep Mason Pass clear, and I I understand that it's it's pretty decent, but as was correctly pointed out, as things start to thaw out in the coming weeks, it's going to be even more muddy up there and I would just encourage folks to to use some common sense and maybe not take a box truck down on a little two-track. So anyway, that's my report. Any questions?
Questions? Doesn't look like it's enough pretty easy. Yeah, I know. It is. It is an inconvenience to drive all the way around, but I've just chosen to do that because a two-hour trip is a lot better than getting stuck in the mud. I know that when all of this basically started with a slide, I did go out Delphi Road a little ways. I mean, when you feel your tires sinking and you see big puddles and mud, you kind of have to stop and turn around and go back, which is what I did because I didn't want to be up to my axles and mud. So a little common sense on some of these things. Yes, we do need to go out and put some signs up to just say it's really bad. Don't go any further. So we'll move on to elected official reports. Who do we have in the back that wants to report? It looks like the sheriff, Sheriff Pope. Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. I do have an agenda item later, but wanted to point out at the beginning of the month, I asked for a restructure of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office and reducing the patrol zones and reopening the Silver Spring Squad. So far, the month of January, I've given you a paper, and there's, there's papers out here for the public. The two thousand and twenty-two gave you our average response times for the total year. In the month of January, if you look under January twenty-three, gives a average response time from the Lyon County Sheriff's Office. It is a significant drop in response times. I know it's a small sample with just the month of January, but we're definitely trending in the right direction. So I just wanted to make the Board of County Commissioners here aware that our restructure seems to be working, especially in Dayton, Silver Springs, Fernley, Silver Springs, are reducing the patrol zones, removing Stagecoach from Dayton's responsibility to put that into the new Silver Spring Squad's responsibility seems to have made a big difference. Also with Fernley too. Big reduction in priority one and priority two. The priority priority three calls in Fernley is the only response time that's shown an increase, and I think that's an anomaly with certain events that happen with the school, school resource officers and a few other events. So that's a report on our response times. I I plan on doing a monthly report and updating that average as the year goes on. Also, the Lyon County Sheriff's Office conducted its first saturation patrol of Fernley. We had a twelve deputies for a twelve-hour shift. During that time, we were able to conduct one hundred and thirty-one proactive stops. One hundred and one of those were traffic stops. Ten people were arrested and a very minimal amount of citations were issued. Wasn't the intent to issue citations or look at it like a revenue generating event, but more of a show of force and a crime reduction event. We did announce the suppression before the event. My thought process on that, we're, we're going to kind of experiment with it. My thought process on announcing it before the event was to see if the fits suppress crime, knowing that there's going to be twelve extra cops in the area. And we did note that the call volume for Fernley that night for a Friday night was minimal. I think we had five calls for service, several of which were medical call. So it appeared that nobody was burglarizing, vandalizing, or or even getting into domestic issues with their spouse. All in all, I believe is a success. We're going to do the Dayton area next. We're not going to announce that one. Like I said, we're going to experiment with it on what works better, so. And I won't say the date now, so nobody will know.
Questions?
Just one.
Commissioner Henderson.
Sure, sure. Your, your reorganization of the patrol zones. So Dayton Zone used to go out to milepost twenty-three. Where does it go now?
You know, I don't know milepost, but Dayton stops at the Stagecoach line and the Carson City line.
Okay.
It used to go to the Silver Springs line, so we removed Stagecoach from the Dayton Patrol.
Okay. But I'm I'm sure that's going to make the Dayton officers happy.
Well, we've had several comments from citizens, one this morning that they see more cops in Dayton. And just to note, we're actually have less cops on patrol than we did at the end of twenty-two right now, so but we are hearing that from citizens that they've never seen so many cops, so that's a good thing. The the deputies are out working hard, and that's, that shows in the response times and the amount of arrests that happened in January. It's because of them. They're actually working very hard.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hawkeye. Yeah. Really nice stuff. Very interesting. If you want to pass this around to the crowd so they can see it.
We put copies out for the public.
Okay. Well, they, you can pass this one around too. They they might enjoy. They'll, if they're like me, they'll forget to look at it when they go outside. Just well done and and appreciate you trying new things and and kind of breathing some life into, sounds like hard work crew, so good job.
Commissioner Keller.
So I really like this piece of paper you just gave out. I'd love to see that at the advisory board so they can understand that that you're doing something and and it really help out. In my experience, it's been that the threat of being caught is more, stops more crime than anything else. The, when people think they're going to get caught, they start thinking about what they're going to do. Most people think they're invincible and go, well, I won't get caught. But if you start playing with their mind and they, they're, they're thinking about it more than they tend not to do it, so I'd like to see how how this turns out, this experiment.
That's what I.
And my question is the deputies that live in Smith Valley, how are we handling them with the kind of closure of of Nevada two oh eight?
So the deputies are still logging on in Smith Valley. What we've asked is that when they begin their shift, they do a patrol of Smith Valley first before they head to their other areas. One of our deputies works in the Silver Springs area. He does have to leave the area before he logs on, so he is in Silver Springs when his shift starts. Another deputy is assigned to Smith Valley and Mason Valley. So he does a patrol of Smith Valley before he heads over Mason Pass to Mason Valley. The other deputy lives out there is one of our command staff who also does a patrol of Smith Valley before he heads over the pass. And if there is any emergency incident, one of those three deputies, including the commander, have been called out to service, so it actually has reduced our response times to definitely being more cognizant of the response time to Smith Valley, so they're keeping their phones on them at night and have responded to several calls for service from their house.
Okay, thank you. The I I just noticed two weeks ago that there was actually a deputy out there at six in the morning when I was zipping by to get over here, which was kind of shocking for a lot of people that were actually on the road. I saw brake lights coming on pretty doggone fast, and they come up over the hill and saw that that deputy's car sitting there, which is good because of people roll through on two oh eight through Wellington at a pretty good clip. Also, the comment on the news the other night when you were going to have your your density patrol, I was hoping we would not continue letting the public know where we were going to be, but it was a good, at least a good start to let them know that they're going to be enforcing in in more of a mass way and people because, well, when I heard that, I'm thinking, well, anybody in Fernley is going to go ahead and go over and do crimes in Dayton, and then when Dayton they have it. So I thought, well, that's, that's a good idea to let them know if something's going on, but let's not keep up the the warning.
Like I said, there's two different theories behind that, that even though they were warned, we're still able to get one hundred and thirty more.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
One lady with an unregistered car was stopped four times.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other elected officials? Thank you, Sheriff Pope. No, no other elected officials. Then we'll move on to item ten, appointed official reports. Then we'll move on to uh, item ten, appointed official reports. And Shayla's moving forward.
We also have Mr. Homan online.
Oh, okay, good.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services. For the record, I just want to get on your guys' radar. We are gearing up for March for Meals, which is the national campaign to end hunger for our older adults. It's one of our major fundraising campaigns, although we fundraise all year long in our senior centers. March for Meals, we really capitalize on that national campaign and really try to get the community involved. So we're gonna be getting that marketing material out here pretty quick. So please keep your eye out for that. Um, a little preemptive to March for Meals, our Yarrington Senior Center is doing their Valentine's Day fundraiser. So you can get a meal for two and pick those up on February fourteenth for anybody in the Yarrington community that wants to do that. Um, I'd also strongly encourage you guys to schedule a ride along with your local Meals on Meals driver, just so you can get a good idea as far as the amazing service that is for our older adults who are extremely isolated in our communities. The other thing I want to just put on your guys' radar, let you know, we're really excited. We were notified yesterday. We had a request in to the community project funding through Senators Cortez, Masto and Rosen to fully expand Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring in Lyon County. And that was approved. So it is a bit of a process to actually get that award. It'll be a while before it's actually on your agenda for approval. But we're super excited that we are getting that funding and being able to move forward with that partnership.
Questions for Shayla? We'll start with Commissioner Keller. No, Commissioner Jacobson? Commissioner Henderson?
No, just uh, once again, thank you for all you do. And for the, excuse me, and for all the, you know, the, the efforts that you guys put in to get federal resources for, for Lyon County. I certainly appreciate that.
And Shaylon, the uh, Yarrington Senior Center Valentine's Dinner. Um, their flyer here, it kind of, it says dinner for four.
Oh. Um, well, I just wrongly assumed dinner for two on a Valentine's Day. I guess they're including the kiddos.
Wait, wait, we got some very active seniors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can have a group dinner now with the dish for four.
Yeah, I, I just.
I know it's lasagna, which is one of my favorites and they make an excellent lasagna there. So it's totally worth it.
Yeah, looks like a good meal, but I will put that up there for anybody to.
I'll snag it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Shayla. So do we have any other? Well, we do have uh, Mr. Homan. You're on.
Good morning, Dustin Homan, Road Director, for the record. Um, just wanted to touch on a couple things. So uh, National Forest Road uh, four, six, three, that was, that was mentioned earlier. I did not realize that Google was sending people that route last. I had checked, Google was sending them over Hudson Pass. Um, and we had put road close signs up there um, until I had heard that people were getting stuck on uh, NF four, six, three. I didn't even realize Google was sending them that way. So we did put signs up both on the, the Mason Valley end and on the Smith end. Um, I asked our guys to just go ahead and put the road close sign next to the one that was, that was mentioned earlier and, and leave it there with, with the directions for Mason Pass. Um, as uh, County Manager Haskins had mentioned, we're not, we're not promoting Mason Pass as the detour, the, the actual detour should be through Gardenville, Carson City, Silver Springs to Yarrington. Just what's with the unpredictable weather that we're having, the, the road's not in too bad a shape now. It does have some puddles out there from, from the snow mountain, the water. But we're, we're trying to address those as we can. Uh, the weather has not been cooperating at all for for us blading too many roads with, with the temperatures we've been having. We're only getting a couple hours in the afternoon if we're lucky. Were the ground ties out enough that we can actually blade them? So so it's kind of putting us a little behind on all roads throughout the county that have, have had issues from uh, all of the moisture that we have received. And, and they're talking potentially some more this Sunday. So we'll see how that, that pans out. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Homan?
But not, not a question of, but Mr. Homan, please give our appreciation to your crew. You, I know you guys have been having to work really, really hard through all this and and uh, let, let them know that we appreciate their hard work.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other reports? Don't see anybody jumping up, no other hands on the board. So let's move on to item eleven, Advisory Board Reports. Do we have any Advisory Board Reports? No hands, nobody getting up. Then we'll move on to consent agenda. Action we taken on all items, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without any extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. I believe we have items twelve A through sixteen D for our normal consent agenda. And I think that there was going to be um, one item polled.
Thirteen B.
Thirteen B is gonna be polled. That's the minutes for January nineteenth. Anything else being polled? Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
Mister, Mister Chair, I, I moved that we approved the consent agenda, items twelve A through sixteen D with the exception of item thirteen B.
Hey, I have a motion and do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have all four O on the vote. Moving on to seventeen.
We, we gotta do thirteen B.
Oh, thirteen B, sorry. Okay, let's discuss thirteen B.
Please, please, Press Treasurer's Office, there were two clerical errors on the minutes submitted for approval. Um, one is the name spelling on number eight of Amadee. And the other was a vote count on the tiebreaker. Of Parker Shell. So those have been corrected anyhow, the property was.
So those have been corrected? And I guess then we will have um, I'll have a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve uh, the resubmitted minutes from the January nineteenth meeting. As red.
Second.
Okay. I, I have a discussion still.
Oh, discussion, yes.
It, just a clarification. I normally don't give a lot of accolades to the, to the people, but I did uh, last, last meeting. But I understand it was under community report. So that really isn't a community report. How do your, how does your office want me to handle that so that I can get it on there? As far as the accolades that I do give them, because I, we get it back on the comments, but I try to give it to them upfront before they leave the building. So just.
Maybe state it for the record.
Okay, I'll just state it for the record. Thank you.
Hey. Thank God we have a uh, motion in a second to uh, accept thirteen B as corrected. Do I have? A uh, unless I have a vote on it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Nope, we got a four O vote and we'll move on then. Moving to the planning consent items. Action will be taken on all items for item seventeen. It'd be seventeen A and seventeen B. Do I have a motion for those two items?
Mister Chair, I moved that we approve the planning consent agenda, item seventeen A and seventeen B as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a four O vote on that. On that, on the consent. Public participation on consent?
Yeah, I was just gonna say we need to.
Oh. Okay. I guess then if we have a public participation on uh, the consented item for seventeen, um, did we have any? All right. Kick you next, yeah, kick me next time. All right. Uh, moving on, public hearing on planning items. Actually, let's see, we've got number eighteen, planning. Eighteen A for possible action to approve a conditional use permit request from John Miles to allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use. That is a single family residential in the community commercial zoning dir- district for the purpose of constructing a detached garage at one five, five Pike Street in the Comstock Historical District in Dayton, APN zero, zero, six dash zero, five, two dash zero, two PLZ two, zero, two, two dash one, eight, nine. Staff report?
Good morning, uh, Bill Ross, Senior Planner. Uh, so the proposed project is located in the Comstock Historical District of Dayton. I'll show them here with the arrow. Uh, here's the project site. The uh, the house there, uh, we'll see in the next slide off of Pike Street. And so the yellow house is what's owned by the applicant, John Miles, uh, who is at here this morning. Uh, he also owns the site to the left and then to the right of the site is Compadre's Mexican Restaurant. And then this is Pike Street here. So if we wrap around the corner, uh, we'll get to Logan Alley and then off of Logan Alley, there's a uh, unnamed side street. And that's where uh, he would access the proposed garage and driveway. It's gonna be built with the project. Um, so this is a uh, legal non-conforming situation. So basically, as you could see, there was a single family house on the property. Uh, the zoning today is community commercial, uh, which doesn't actually allow single family residential or, you know, residential accessory structures as, as would be the case with the proposed detached garage. Uh, so again, just to go over the project, uh, it's basically a one car garage with a small uh, area inside for some storage, uh, three hundred sixty, sixty-eight square feet. And uh, when we have a legal non-conforming situation such as a residential use on a commercial property, uh, to expand that use, such as adding the garage would require a conditional use permit. Uh, so this is the applicant's proposed site plan. You can see with the star there is the proposed garage. Uh, it's located pretty well behind the, the house there on Pike Street. And you see the driveway that would go back to that uh, rear alley. And it maintains the setbacks, if not greater than the house that's already there. Uh, these are the building elevations. Uh, the top right there, the, I guess it's the north elevation. That would be the site that would face uh, the Mexican restaurant. So no windows on that side. Uh, not that privacy is really an issue with a garage, but uh, it's good design anyway. And then uh, the lower right hand corner, the west, that would be what's facing the alley at the back there. Uh, this was reviewed by the historical commission, as is the case with projects in the Comstock Historical District, and they gave their letter of approval. So again, just with the conditional use permit, we do have some findings uh, that are in the staff report, just to go over them very quickly. Uh, this is intended for the use of the residents that are already there. So it wouldn't introduce any new travel to the area. Uh, it's also good having the driveway go off the back alley rather than Pike Street in terms of, you know, any potential pedestrian conflicts or anything like that. Uh, so it's a good design. Um, it will require a building permit. Uh, so it'd be subject to, you know, life and health, safety review. Uh, if you have any questions?
Questions? Uh, see Commissioner Keller is pulling up his microphone.
I just had a couple things and maybe it's not really a question, or maybe you can just educate me a little bit. Uh, when you, when you do this, it's a residential, it's in a commercial district and historic district. So when it uh, I see a lot of the buildings like in Carson and everywhere elsewhere, it's a commercial and they take it over and now it's a lawyer's office or something like that. So it has to come back through and, and be upgraded for everything. Is that the garage too? It doesn't get, it has to come to commercial. I don't know what commercial standards are for a garage.
Andrew Haskin for the record. Um, yeah, so this wouldn't have to be brought to commercial standards for the garage portion of it. Um, that, this residence has always been a residence since it was built. Um, so that somewhere along the lines of zoning got changed. Um, not, not really sure when that, that happened, but uh, um, anyway, it's just to the conditional use permit is required to expand the non-conforming use, even though um, again, that, that's how it's always been used. So.
So in a historic district too, does the, the facade, the front of that have to look like the house? I mean, as far as historic or is, do we have?
I don't know that we have any adopted standards per se, but uh, generally best practice in regard to get historic architects to do that kind of work is when you're building a new uh, accessory building, you want it to be subordinate of the main structure. So kind of smaller. And then actually if that's sometimes even if that looks a little bit world modern, it helps somebody who's looking at the historic uh, structure on the site to distinguish what's really historic. You know, you don't want to kind of falsely mimic what's there. Um, so that's kind of the design here, you know, whether intentionally or not. Uh, it's just a basic detached garage. And it's, you know, smaller in size within the same setbacks. So it's not gonna confuse anybody who's reading the house in this bracket.
I do, Andrew Haskin, again, I do have one more thing to add. Our code actually does require similar siding and roofing for all accessory structures, whether they're in the historic district or not. So um, that would be, that would be required. This has already been approved by the historic district as well. So that helps.
Yeah, and did this go before the advisory board? Do you know? Yeah, it, it did. I didn't see it in our paperwork, so I, I'd like to know if it.
It was planning, planning commission seven oh?
Yeah, I saw planning, but I didn't see advisory board, the.
Oh, oh, citizen advisory board.
Citizen advisory board. I just want to know if the community looked at this at all.
Sounds like it did. I didn't see any comments from them.
Okay, I'd, I'd like it on the reports in the future. So we at least know. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson, were you? You're good? Commissioner Henderson? You're good? Okay, looking for a motion uh, or I should say we have public comment. Yep. Any public comment?
None on Zoom.
None on Zoom, none in the house here. So I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, in light of uh, approval from the historical district and, and our department, um, I would make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit request from John Miles to um, for the expansion of a non-conforming use, single family residential in the CC Community Commercial Zoning District for the purpose of constructing a detached garage at one five, five Pike Street in the Comstock Historical District, Dayton, APN zero, zero, six hyphen zero, five, two hyphen zero, two PLZ hyphen two, zero, two, two hyphen one, eight, nine.
I'll second it. Okay, and I believe, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
I, I just have a question. Um, that is, that motion's based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval as listed in the staff report?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's on the records.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Four O on the uh, vote? Thank you. Okay, it's the end of the planning applications, regular agenda back advisory board. Um, for possible action to point up to one member of the mound house advisory board with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have one application makes it easy.
Mister Chair, I moved that we appoint Jeff Proridge to the mound house advisory board. It was a term expire in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second on that. Do I have a second? Okay.
I have a question on it.
Oh, a question, okay.
How, how does that, where, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna, I plan on voting for this. But how does this work when you have a husband, wife on the same board and it's a three man board? The, in other words, they can control the the vote. Yeah, yeah, we can, he's a quorum, but I don't know if we have policy or anything like that. It just, I'm gonna, lack of anybody else showing up to participate, I'm gonna vote for, but uh, it, it's a little bit of a concern.
Yeah. I'm gonna defer that to.
It's my person.
Aaron Lopez, for the record, because they are advisory and there's nothing else that stays within our bylaws, that there is nothing stopping them from preventing from family members joining the same boards together.
I thought mound house was five members.
I'm not following your question.
I said, I thought mound house had five members on the advisory board.
Is it because of the term?
No, no, mound house, the advisory board. I thought it was five members, not three.
Where does it say three?
It doesn't. I'm just, Commissioner Keller said it was three. I, I believe it's five.
I'll have to go back and look for my recollection. It was Silver City at the time, Mason Valley. Was the only two that had, I believe that this one's a five person board.
I'm sure it is. If I go to, I go to the meetings every month.
Okay.
I stand corrected then.
Whether it's five or three, uh, since we don't have any restrictions on that, we have to move on with the, uh, with the item.
And, and ju- just for the record, we've had a husband and wife previously serving on the mound house advisory board. And we also currently have a husband and wife serving on the Dayton Regional Advisory Board.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second and I, any other comments from the public on this? If you're, yes, okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
So if they get divorced though, then it'd be okay, right? I'm kidding, I've all four.
Valid point, yeah. Any other, any other comments from the public or commissioners before we move on with a vote? All those in favor of, uh, appointing Jeff Trowbridge to the mound house advisory board, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Oh, it passes four oh. Going to move on to item twenty, county manager for presentation, no, my presentation update from Northern Nevada Development Authority.
Good morning, Jeff Suditz for the record. I am the executive director of the Northern Nevada Development Authority, and I'm excited to be here today, my first commission meeting. And to get to talk to you today about our organization and about our staff and who we are and what we do. So to give you a little bit about my background, I, my, I've been supporting economic development in Nevada for about twelve years now. I started off as a labor economist for Department of Employment Training and Rehabilitation. From there, I moved over to the Commission of Economic Development to support global trade and economic development efforts. While there, I transitioned into the Governor's Office of Economic Development. After that position, I went over to the State Department of Agriculture to help build a global trade and economic development program there. And following that position, as a good millennial, I went over to NV Energy and supported economic development at that position. Following, uh, eleven months ago, yesterday, I came over to N N D A to be a part of this, uh, part of the economic development coin. And support rural Nevada economic development. My mom's side of the family has been in Nevada for seven generations. She grew up on the minor ranch in Dayton. My dad's side of the family came from the Iron Hills of Minnesota to Yarrington to work in the mining industry here. And I believe he may still have some of the school records in wrestling and football. Uh, he took us out to Spring Creek where I grew up and was in the mining industry out over there. I came back to this part of the state to attend UNR to earn my economics degree and international, uh, international business degree. And later in two thousand seventeen, while working for the Department of Agriculture, I finished my MBA also at UNR. Our newest member on the team is Tatiana Vukovic. She's been on with N N D A since October. She has been supporting economic development efforts in the state longer than I have. She started in two thousand eight with the Commission of Economic Development. Has worked for multiple, uh, state agencies, taxation, agriculture, and Dieter, as well as back to Go Ed was her, her last position before joining N N D A. So she's a, a wealth of knowledge and the, the brains behind the outfit, helping make sure that my top level ideas make sense. Pop the bubble when they're too fluffy and, and is there on the behind the scenes to make sure that they're executed properly. Amy Barnes is our Director of Business Development. She is a Yarrington resident and based here. She is our boots on the ground and has been with N N D A for about four years now. She does our lead generation outreach and efforts to bring companies to the state, to the region. Helps companies within the region with their expansions. And also if companies are having any issues, jumps in to help figure out what those issues are and help solve them for retention purposes. Evelyn Wheeler is our office manager. She has been with the organization in multiple roles for five or six years now. And she is there in our office helping us with our day to day operations. So the Northern Nevada Development Authority is a regional economic development authority in the state. There's eight of them throughout the state and N N D A was formed in nineteen eighty one. They are the first and oldest regional development authority. And our vision is to create a prosperous, resilient and sustainable economy for Northern Nevada. Our mission is to influence, facilitate and support the ongoing growth and prosperity of the economic system of the Sierra region of Nevada. So N N D A, our goal is to be that one stop shop for the state, for our region, the counties and cities within our region, the businesses and the ecosystem within the Sierra region to support business, economic and workforce development efforts. The Sierra region that N N D A represents encompasses five counties. It's Carson City, Douglas County, Lion County, Mineral County and Story County. It's roughly a landmass of just over seven thousand square miles. N N D A's strategic focus is to work close with our county, city and business partners, as well as the state to support business, community, workforce and infrastructure development. And since two thousand eighteen throughout the Sierra region, and I need to give kudos and thank Andrew for all his hard work during his time at N N D A supporting these efforts. N N D A was able to bring in and assist, assist bringing in twenty new companies. And helping ten others expand within the region. Seventy-five percent of those companies were within the manufacturing industry sector. Creating one thousand ninety-two jobs with an average wage of thirty dollars and forty-five cents. And reported capital investment of four hundred ninety-three point two million dollars. Breaking this down to the line county level, uh, ten companies, new companies were assisted coming to the region, to the county and two companies expanding. Uh, since two thousand eighteen, uh, sixty-seven percent of those companies was within the manufacturing industry sector. Creating five hundred and forty-one jobs with an average wage of thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents with reported capital investment of a hundred and twenty-one point six million dollars. And this slide is a, a couple of the companies that were supported since then. Uh, and I have a list of the names of those companies if the commissioner or commissioners would like to see that later. N N D A is very involved with community development as well. And, and in looking at community development with the different cities and the different counties within the region, we need to be communicating with our partners. This is important for us with Lion County. There's a lot happening here. There's a lot of potential uh, future happenings here. And so we're meeting with Andrew and his, his team once a month to ensure that we know what the county's goals are, what their needs are. And make sure that we're aligned with those efforts at the same time, being able to communicate what we see coming in, what kinds of companies are looking at the region? What are the size of the companies? What are their infrastructure and natural resource needs so that we can communicate those happenings to the county. So as they're doing, planning and trying to figure out what is best for the county, they've got that data to be able to make those decisions. N N D A supports Lion County Community Development. Uh, Amy Barnes, our, uh, Director of Business Development does a really good job supporting these efforts with the Main Street Program in Fernley. She's been involved with a lot of those meetings and uh, as well as on the, being on the board of the CDBG program through the Governor's Office of Economic Development. That's the, uh, Community Development Block Grant. And through this grant, counties and, and cities can apply for funds for supporting infrastructure development or initiatives that these areas need. Uh, one of the examples of that was Walker River corridor economic development plan that was funded through this grant. Uh, and the newest initiative is called the USDA World Partners Network. N N D A was designated as that network within the region. And what USDA has done is they are trying to help support from their side of things, from the federal side. Uh, in, infrastructure development initiatives, and they are funding three or four people in the state. And they've, to help support these efforts, and they've designated certain counties within the state in Lion County as one of those counties. And what these people are going to be doing is looking for grants on the federal side, show, telling the county about them. And then if the county is a part of this network, which Lion County is, as they're applying for these competitive grants, they're able to get an extra point within that grant application, but hey, you're within this network. So you're now a little bit more competitive than someone who's not within one of these networks. It's still being rolled out, so we're not a hundred percent sure how it's going to look. We're hoping that these staff that USDA is bringing in will not only help look for grants, but help guide on how to write them, maybe write them, hopefully manage them. I, that's probably asking too much, but it would be neat to see something like that occur from the federal side to support these communities. Workforce development, N N D A in the past has had more of a hands-on approach to workforce development. Uh, when you look at the state and all the workforce development initiatives and organizations, there's over a hundred of them. So right now we're kind of taking a step back from having our hands in the workforce development pot, but it's very important and a big part of the economic development ecosystem. So we want to be a part of that conversation and help guiding that conversation. When a company comes in looking for support, we'll typically reach out to Dieter's employee NV team. They are, Dieter has a lot of resources for workforce development. They've got a lot of staff and, and grant programs. So they're a free resource, can do labor market reports for us. And a company can go in there and get, have job, uh, job fairs, online, in person. There's grants to help cover funding for positions that they need to train up or skill up. And, and they're all free for the companies. If they, there's a program that can be funded, uh, through the, through Dieter, a lot of times we'll work with Western Nevada College. There's some of their training programs. So the Dieter will fund W N C to then train the employee to go into this business. So it's a great partnership circle that way. And then we're not getting in the weeds and, and muddying the waters and confusing the conversation there by trying to do it directly. Uh, there's a lot of other organizations that like join that have great resources and support for, uh, these initiatives. So, uh, with these hundred entities of, if the local community partners and nonprofits that are free can't meet the company's needs, then we'll look at the for-profit entities. If those don't exist, then we try to get everyone together to find out, okay, with this company and this industry that they're coming in, is there a need for new programs to be developed to scale up and train these entities? An example of this is, uh, within the last year, a hundred and sixty million dollars of grant funds has come into Lion County companies for, from the Department of Energy for this lithium e- ecosystem and industry sector, uh, from research and development to workforce training. And W N C is partnering with these entities to be able to develop the training programs to have these workers go in and to these recycle, battery recycling operations or bi-like solutions. And firmly for their unique, uh, process to more efficiently extract lithium from lithium deposits. So we're working together with these grants and with all the workforce development entities to push the needle to that, that next level to help supply that need. Infrastructure is very important in Nevada, uh, especially in rural Nevada. There's a lot of needs throughout all the different utilities. We're really excited to hear that the governor is earmarking four hundred million dollars for broadband internet in rural Nevada. Really interested to see how that rolls out and, and, and who will qualify for that and very supportive of that. Very excited to hear that he has a liaison for rural Nevada that, uh, Commissioner mentioned earlier. That'll be a great opportunity to be able to have that ear to get directly to the governor when big initiatives are needed. Burnley last year was awarded a US Department of Transportation grant of twenty-five million dollars. And N D A was very supportive of that, uh, sending letters to the entities in DC to, to help move the needle there. Uh, that goes to Mark Four, they're working with Mark Four Capital who owns the Victory Logistics District up there. And it's a, a bridge to connect their two properties. Some other big developments within the region that have received news and have a lot of potential are uh, Northern Nevada Industrial Center in Silver Springs. There's Enterprise Way in Dayton. Uh, Tri Center two, number two out there in Fernley pending a lands bill approval in Congress. And then the Western Nevada Commerce Center, that used to be the old Black Gold Terminal site, uh, between Fernley and Hazen. Those are so, lots of opportunity within these different developments through Lion County. Some other N N D A programs and initiatives that we support is our Nevada Certified Site Program. Amy Barnes is leading the charge there. And this is a, a great program where for targeting site selectors nationally, as well as other businesses coming to an area. One of the big questions that companies come in first, when they're looking at areas is what sites make sense for us? And what does that due diligence look like? If that due diligence is done on the front end that the site certified program does, it, it saves the company a lot of time and a lot of money because the package is already there, that a lot of that due diligence is done. Then they can look at it and say, okay, yes, this makes sense for us to take it to the next step of due diligence or know if this site doesn't work for us, what else is out there? So this, the largest one of these sites, uh, N N D A, uh, certified was that, uh, Mark Four site, the Victory Logistics District, when it was the, uh, Crossroads Commerce Center. And that helped, when I was at NV Energy, Mark Four team let me know that because of that site certification, that was one of the big reasons they came in and purchased that site. All that due diligence made it easy for them. It also helps them present it to other clients coming in, other businesses wanting to move to that area. So that's a, a big win from, for this program. The most recent, uh, certified site that N N D A did was the Western Nevada Commerce Center, uh, up there past Fernley and, and towards Hazen. Another, uh, program that Amy works on is the EPA Brown's Build Grant. This grant will provide phase one and phase two, two analysis if it's needed on sites. That's part of the due diligence process when a company comes in to see if there's anything wrong with the site off from an EPA standpoint, a phase one will be done. And if everything's clear, then nothing else is needed. If there's some potential issues, then a phase two can be done. And this grant will cover the costs for that. So that also helps speed up this conversation from landowners looking to do industrial development or companies coming in, helps speed up the time of it, as well as some of that cost. And then there's o- other tools in the economic development toolbox, opportunity zones, uh, funds associated with the opportunity zones, foreign trade zones. Um, different visa programs that, that we use when needed, if it's relevant for a company, it helps from the federal side down, move the bar when, when companies are looking for some of these initiatives to move capital gains from one project to another and help communities that need extra development. That's all I have for you today. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions now or afterwards if I've talked too long, and thank you for having me.
Questions, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation and for being here. It, it's important for us to, to know what's going on. I know that a lot of things that you're working on, you can't tell us about. And I respect that, but certainly appreciate your efforts in bringing more businesses to Lion County because we certainly need them. And it'd be nice to have people living in Lion County, actually get to work in Lion County and not go out to Carson City or Washoe or wherever. So, and I hope to, hope to see you back here again. But thanks a lot.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, thank you for coming in. I apologize for not getting back to you from your emails. Uh, we, we've been doing a lot. There's a lot coming into Silver Springs that you're aware of. And so, thank you for showing up.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um, just want to highlight a couple of the points that you made. Uh, first of all, thank you for your presentation. Um, but I do want to give a shout out to, uh, Leslie and Marty with Join and Fernley. They do a great job. Um, and, uh, also I want to give a shout out not just to W N C, but I think W N C, TMCC and Great Basin College to, to just to name three that I'm aware of. Doing a great job of getting, um, our young kids, um, out in field, working and, uh, being very successful without going through a lot of the extra stuff that four-year universities, um, uh, require, um, these TMCC, W N C and Great Basin College, cut to the chase. Uh, get, get these kids trained up in the field and, uh, uh, help them become very productive citizens. So I do want to give a shout out to those, uh, you, um, educational post, uh, secondary education facilities and, uh, uh, in Nevada. Um, and then, uh, also, uh, again, just thank you for your time here today.
Now just say thank you for coming in, giving presentation, gives a good idea and the public here as to what an NDA is all about. Um, and we've kind of gone back and forth on our schedule. And when we can sit down and talk a little bit and we'll get get to that soon. There isn't anything else, we will say thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to twenty B for possible action, approve the resolution for Lyon County's proposal to exchange real property owned by Lyon County located at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle Mound House for real property owned by Central Lyon County Fire Protection District located at fifty-six Red Rock Road Mound House. All for the purpose of establishing a community center in Mound House and setting date for a public hearing on the proposed property exchange. So we'll have a discussion here. Any questions, anything? We've got um, Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, yeah, so this is to officially begin the process of swapping the land that we have in Mound House for the fire station um, that Central Lion Fire Protection District has. Um, that we will remember, we have, I think, what, two acres um, on Garnet Circle. Um, and um, this would be all to establish a community center at the um, at the firehouse location. So um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Well, essentially what will happen is there's this resolution here to to begin that process and then we'll have a public hearing on March second. Uh, so go go over the rest of it.
Commissioner Jacobson, you have a question?
No, just to comment, I see this as a win-win uh, for for the uh, community center and and for the fire district. So uh, I hope we can continue to do these types of um, business transactions, whatever you want to call it. Uh, it would, it works for the county, it works for these other organizations. So well done. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I I agree, this is a win-win. You know, is I I believe we heard heard earlier, uh, reasons that nineteen sixty-nine, the county commission said that getting a community center in Mound House was their top priority. Well, we're going to get to it. Yeah, and but thi- this is a good solution. And the there was some, there was some pushback at first from some of the residents of this of Mound House because who wouldn't want a brand new community center, right? But they've come to realize that this is the the best way to go and they will have something sooner rather than waiting probably ten more years for us to be able to afford to build them one. So I appreciate you guys working on this and and is the uh, Commissioner Jacobson said, I think it's a win-win.
Commissioner Keller. You'll come in? Now, I have to agree with uh, both Commissioner Jacobson and Commissioner Henderson that it is a uh, a winning proposal here to exchange property and get started on a community center for Mound House. So um, I will be looking for a motion to approve the resolution. Actually, let's wait and have public comment. My brain's kind of scattered today. No public comment.
Okay.
All right, now we'll go ahead and look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve resolution for Lyon County's proposal to exchange real property owned by Lyon County located at one fifty-eight Garnet Circle Mound House for a real property owned by Central Lyon County Fire Protection District located at fifty-six Red Rock Road in Mound House for the purpose of establishing the community center in Mound House and like to set the date of March two, twenty twenty-three for a public hearing on the proposed property exchange.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by uh, Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I we have a four oh on that.
Mr. Chair, uh, Steve Ryan, District Attorney's Office. I just wanted to let the board know and the public know the fire district is going through a similar process. And that should be started this month so that the timing should be about the same for both the county and fire district.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Moving to twenty C for possible action, prove annervation agreement to migrate the master services agreement and task orders from far west engineering to Dowell Engineering. And Mr. Haskin.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, yeah, so Far West Engineering merged with Dowell Engineering sometime last year. Um, it's been several months. However, as of January first, they actually officially changed their name to Dowell Engineering. And so in order for us to continue to pay our bills there, we have to do this novation agreement, which will migrate the contract officially over to down. So unhappy to answer any questions, but it doesn't change any of the terms of the agreement, just the
Any.
Chairman Hockaday, I make a motion to approve uh, annervation agreement to migrate the master services agreement and task orders from Far West Engineering to Dowell Engineering due to the merger.
And I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion as second. Um, we'll ask if there is any discussion or public comment before we vote. I see none. So all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Hey, we have four oh on that vote. Twenty D. For possible action, approve, deny or amend the resolution of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating declaration of emergency that was declared in resolution twenty-three dash zero-two. And on this one, I will read the resolution into the record. A resolution of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating declaration of emergency that was declared in resolution twenty-three dash zero-two, whereas the Lyon County Board of Commissioners declared a state of emergency in response to severe weather event flooding. Whereas Lyon County was being threatened at the time of the declaration by a series of severe weather events with possible flooding that has a potential to destroy significant amounts of property and threaten the lives of Lyon County residents. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has determined that the purposes of the declaration of emergency no longer exist and that the declaration of emergency should be revoked and terminated. Therefore, let it be resolved that the Lyon County Board of Commissioners is terminating declaration of emergency that was declared in resolution twenty-three dash zero-two with the termination date of January seventeen, twenty twenty-three. So that's the resolution to terminate the declaration of emergency. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, don't have a motion.
I'll make I'll make a motion real quick. I move to accept resolution, approve resolution twenty-three oh three, terminating de- declaration of emergency.
I'll second. Second, okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Uh, vote of four zero.
Did, did you do public comment?
No, I didn't have any public comment on that. Was that necessary on public comment for? Oh, it's an action item, sorry. Yep. Uh, any public comment? Right? I'll try to remember that.
I I'll try to remember to kick you.
Yeah. Babe, item twenty-one, District Attorney for Possible Action, acknowledgement of findings of fact and conclusion of law regarding open meeting law complaint, OAG file number one, three, eight, nine, seven, dash, four, two, zero. The opinion from the Attorney General's Office is attached to the supporting materials. So we have any commissioner comments on item twenty-one A?
I think we need to read it into the record if from what I read, is that correct?
Uh, you don't need to read the opinion into the record. You just need to acknowledge the receipt of the opinion.
Okay.
District Attorney. Uh, the open meeting law requires, uh, just a little background. This was an open meeting law complaint uh, filed during the twenty twenty-one uh, Nevada Legislative Session. And the Attorney General issued its opinion this month. And under the open meeting law, if there's a violation, the board is required to place it on their agenda and acknowledge the Attorney General's opinion. So that's why this item is before you today. I can answer any questions about the the agenda item, the complaint, uh, the opinion, if you have any. But the action requested from the board today is to acknowledge receipt of that opinion. It is attached to the agenda, available for public review and consideration.
Hey, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I don't think it's any surprise that I don't necessarily agree with the Attorney General on this. Um, not the first time I disagreed with him, but um, with the with the way legislative sessions go and and ebb and flow and and hearings coming in, I know where I don't know how to avoid this unless when we have our agenda items for this session, we list every bill that's introduced by the legislature. So it's just my comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I was, I I echo Commissioner Henderson's uh, concerns. Um, uh, uh, there's obviously a way around this and to make it right. So I think making this right is obviously imperative. Um, we obviously messed up, so um, but I I I am curious, do we have a plan on how we can maybe address some of the legislative issues as they come fast and furious? And have it agendized properly in time to address it before it goes to the vote.
Uh, Commissioner Jacobson, we are working on that plan. Uh, the DA's office, county manager, I've had communication with Commissioner Keller. I'm sure we will others uh, to figure out what uh, might work. We've looked at some other counties and cities. Uh, they're all in a similar situation. Uh, so we probably will have a plan by the next meeting. I anticipate you'll see an agenda item. The legislature is in session, so uh, those agenda items will start appearing. And we would, we anticipate there will be either a reference to a specific list of bills or an actual list of bills on the agenda. We're not sure what that will look like. Uh, you are correct that the opinion uh, does require us to make changes. And we're on board with doing that and complying with the open meeting law and addressing the concerns raised in the opinion. Whether we agree or not, that's where the county stands. So that would be the plan going forward.
Um, and then just a thought, if if this is uh, very difficult, if not impossible issue, maybe we submit it as a BDR for next year that they can't act on it until counties have had a chance. So maybe, maybe that would throw something back their way. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
So I agree with everybody. I don't think we have uh, much choice of how how this moves forward, whether or not we have public comment. Which will have plenty of, I'm sure. The motion itself, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion.
And you could just hold off for a second.
Okay.
I was just gonna make a comment that uh, I've I've got to agree with the other commissioners that it is going to be a task to figure out how to handle this, uh, whether we list every single um, BDR or issue and say that they could possibly be mentioned at the at the meeting during that uh, item if we happen to continue putting the item on the agenda. So yeah, it is going to be uh, somewhat difficult, but uh, we'll just have to get it done. And for Matt, any public comment? And seeing none, then I will uh, look for the motion.
Hey, I I move that the Lyon County Board of Commissioners acknowledge the opinion from the Attorney General's Office with the attached supporting materials and his findings of fact and conclusion of law regarding open meeting law complaint, OAG file number thirteen, eight, nine, seven, hyphen, four, two, oh.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we have a four oh vote.
Thank you.
Move on. Sheriff backup, Sheriff Pope. Item twenty-two A for possible action, approve a line item in the Lyon County Sheriff's Budget to accept and maintain donations to be utilized for the junior deputy program.
Logan, uh, Sheriff Pope for the record. Exactly what it says, uh, we're looking at launching the junior deputy program, commonly referred to as the Explorer Program and other agencies. Uh, we do have citizens that would like to donate to the program. Uh, we do have other line items that handle donations, uh, but I would like the funding to come out of a specific line item uh, for that program for tracking purposes. I spoke with about Mr. Foley about it. Uh, seems to be in agreeance. Pretty straightforward.
Uh, Commissioner comments? Anything, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Sheriff Pope, great idea. You know, like, like I said last time, you were talking about shop with the cop, the more we can get positive interactions with young people, with law enforcement, I think the better it is for all of everybody. So I I applaud you for for this.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, great job on growing your own. I agree with Commissioner Henderson. This is a wonderful idea. Um, maybe even down the line, we can get a scholarship going for a kid or two to sign on with Lyon County as a sheriff and we help pay for some of schooling or whatever. So it's a great, great program and well done on starting a growing your own program.
Commissioner Keller. No comment. And I agree, it's a good program. Um, see no problem with uh, getting a line item if uh, Mr. Foley says it's going to be doable, then obviously it is. We have any public comment? No public comment? Yes.
Sorry, one more thing, Mr. Pope. Just put on your radar. I know I sent this, I believe, to the DA, but um, April eighteenth, I know there's a career fair at Fernley High School. And uh, I'll I can get you information on that if you're interested.
We've received the information.
Good. All right, I'll put you down. Thanks.
So looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a line item in the Lyon County Sheriff's Budget to accept and maintain donations to be utilized for the junior deputy program.
Okay. Was that you, Commissioner Jake?
Yes, sir.
So motion by uh, Commissioner Henderson and uh, second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have four zero. And we're going to move on to.
Thank you.
You want to take a break? Yeah, yeah, we did. Uh, okay, utilities, item twenty-three A for possible action, issue a notice of award to Aspen Developers Corporation for being a successful bidder on the Ten Mile Hill. Tank Project in Dayton authorized a contract with an amount not to exceed four million, one hundred and forty-four thousand and authorize the Utilities Director to sign project-related documents. Project funding will come from the Dayton Water Fund. And it looks like we have Mr. Burketta.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners, good morning. David Burketta for the record. This uh, project is for us to build a water tank in Dayton as part of our um, you know, master planning process. Uh, we're going to put a one million gallon tank on the east side of Dayton at the Ten Mile Hill uh, area. And uh, for this, we received four bidders on this project. Aspen Developer Corporation was determined to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the project. Um, the three other bidders we received was from Sierra Nevada Construction um, with a bid amount of four point four million dollars, a little over. Q and D Construction uh, with a bid amount of five point three million dollars and uh, MKD Construction with a bid amount of five point, um, just under five point seven million dollars. Um, the engineer's estimate for this project was um, just a little bit over five point five million dollars. Um, so with that, I had to answer any questions you have with this project.
Mr. Comment, uh, Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Henderson.
Um, just, th- thank you, Mr. Chair. Just just one comment. Um, I'm always leery when the engineer's estimate's a lot more than the bid, so hopefully we won't be seeing change orders to bump it up there. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller. And I have the same comment as Commissioner Henderson, you know, and you have a million dollar variation there and the engineers are saying it might be five point five million. Let's hope they get it done. Okay. Public comment. Seeing none, and let's have the motion. Have a motion.
I'll motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I didn't want to read it all. Motion to issue a notice of award to Aspen Developers Corporation for being the successful bidder on the Ten Mile Hill Project in Dayton, authorize a contract with the amount not to exceed four million, one hundred and forty-four thousand and authorize the Utilities Director to sign project-related documents.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? We have that taken care of. Vote of four zero. Twenty-four agenda requests. Any agenda request from Commissioner Jacobson?
Not necessarily an gender request, but uh, I would like to see someone from the roads department go out and address Miss Amanda Bernand's concerns um, with that area. It sounds as though if we don't do something, it's going to deteriorate even further. So um, I would ask that we maybe send someone from the roads department out uh, to her neighborhood and then that is all ahead.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I have none.
Commissioner Henderson.
Not this time.
And I don't have any at this time either. So we'll go to our final commissioner comments, item twenty-five, and we'll just start with Commissioner Henderson.
Um, but thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as I as I mentioned earlier, I'm looking forward to the National Association of Counties Conference. It's always learn something there. And also, it's it's nice to get through a meeting without having to take a smoke break. So that's that's all my comments.
Uh, let's go with Commissioner Jacobson.
None at this time. I do, uh, just want to thank the people from Mason Valley and and Smith Valley is it's got to be a trying time as that road is closed, so. Out of our control really, and just I want to extend my appreciation for those residents as I know it's a difficult time.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
No comment.
Well, I just want to say for our commissioners and county manager going to D C, have an enjoyable trip, if that's possible, going to D C. I said I've been there before. Really don't care to go back, but I'm sure I will in the future sometime. And the other thing, I just wanted to remind everybody, the Valentine's Dinner for the Yearington Senior Center, let's try to keep the senior center pumped up with funds. And everybody, please be careful this next week, this coming weekend for the for some more snow and slippery roads. That's all the comment that I have today. Do we have a closed session?
We do have a closed session, no.
Do have a closed session.
If we can do public participation and then take a quick break that.
We will do that. So we'll have our final public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated the public participation will be held at this time, though maybe returned to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct the public comment after discussion of each agenda item. But before the board takes any action, so do we have any further public comment for today's meeting? Seeing none in chambers and then on Zoom, I will say we're going to close now for our closer go to our closed session. And I guess if anybody wants to take off, they can or wait for us to come back and say adjourned.